Okay, good evening. My name is Joe Stranowski, Chair of the Rockport Planning Board. And seeing as we have a quorum, I am officially calling this meeting to order at 5:30 PM on February 23rd, 2023. The planning board is comprised of volunteers appointed at the discretion of the select board. Our charge is to ensure that the applications that come before us comply with the town's land use ordinance in the Rockport Comprehensive Plan. The board must determine whether there is sufficient evidence in the record, which is the material supplied by the applicant, to support a decision to approve the application. This is accomplished by comparing the information in the record to the requirements of the ordinance or statute. And so before we get started here this evening, I would like to seat John Veman as a voting member this evening. And welcome aboard, John. Before we start, does anyone on the board wish to identify conflict of interest on any of the applications presented tonight that would make it difficult for you to judge these applications fairly and objectively? If so, I ask that you identify these conflicts now. Okay, seeing none, we'll go ahead and proceed. Ryan, have we received any written comments prior to the meeting regarding anything that we're looking at this evening? Nothing? Okay, thank you. And Orion, I assume that you will be monitoring the chat window this evening for public comments?
Yeah, so the link is published, so anybody that wanted to attend, they can, they can attend.
Okay, and for those members of the public that may not be quite familiar with Zoom, if you move your mouse down to the bottom of the screen, you'll see a window that comes up that says chat on it. Just click that and type in any comments that you might have. Okay, um, so tonight we have before us one pre-application on tonight's agenda and a review of some finding of facts and then some discussion regarding some ordinance changes. The first item on the agenda actually is the approval of minutes. I don't think that we had minutes posted for the January meeting, so we'll skip over that and hopefully see those next month. And we'll move ahead to item two on the agenda. And Orion, I assume that if we need documents to reference here, that you'll be able to share those with the group?
I will, yes.
Okay, great. Okay, so item two is consideration of a second pre-application site plan review for a commercial style building for jewelry making located at 589 Commercial Street in Rockport. It's identified as map 14 lot 19 and it's within the 907 zoning district. The property is owned and represented by Gregory McIntyre. And so before we get started with that, I guess I'd like to just make a few comments, procedural comments. This is our second look at this pre-application for 589 Commercial Street. And so typically, the purpose of a pre-application, again, I review this on every pre-application that comes before us. It's just an opportunity for the board to do an initial review. Typically, it's informal. The applicant is not required to come in with a full set of drawings, nor meet all the requirements of the final site plan review. Just enough to give us an idea, some information about what it is that they're proposing. It's an opportunity for the applicant to ask the board questions that he may have, and it's also an opportunity to give the board a chance to express any concerns that they might have regarding the, the pre-application. Typically, the outcome out of the pre-application would be, and this has happened in the past, is that the applicant may decide that they cannot satisfy the board's concerns and drop their interest in the application, or the applicant would return with a final site plan submission. The board would review it and hopefully the board's concerns would be satisfied in that. So with that, I'll turn it over to Gregory and let you explain what it is that we've got here this evening. I did not see, other than your letter, I did not see any new submissions for the application. Is that correct, Orion?
That's correct.
Okay, all right, just wanted to make sure I didn't miss something. So Greg, if you want to go ahead and run through it?
I hover over the video thing and there we go. Okay, sorry, I'm not particularly.
That's okay, take your time.
Familiar with.
So if you put your mouse over your block on the upper right hand side is a blue square with three dots in it, click on that and then it'll say start video.
So I have pin, add profile picture and rename. I don't have any start video.
I think somehow you got back to.
I see start video down at the bottom and I click it and nothing's happening.
I think somehow you might have gotten. I think you might have gotten back to the home screen on Zoom, it sounds like. If you go to the bottom, do you have a Mac or a Microsoft?
I have Microsoft. I'm, I'm right below your video. I have a bar that pops up that has mute, then start video, then participants, et cetera.
Okay, and if you hit start video?
Yeah, I'm hitting start video and nothing's happening.
Okay, well, we could hear you.
So, I mean, if you don't need my video, I'm okay. Going without video, I don't know, yeah, I'm, I'm getting a request to start video. I click it, it says, oh, let me see.
Greg, by any chance?
Sorry, no, there's no. It says that it failed to start the camera. Please select another video camera in settings. I don't have another video camera. Is this, is this a problem? I might be able to hold it in 20 minutes.
We can hear you just fine.
Okay, sorry about that. Yeah, so anyways, I'm sorry, I got a little nervous. I have a prepared statement for you, so I hope I don't come off too much as, you know, reading it, but it is what it is, and I'm a little more nervous now that the video is not working, so. First, I'd like to thank the board for taking the time to hear me on this matter. I moved to Rockport in some part because it's of its nice feel, and I know that this board plays a large role in assuring that it keeps us down home type of character. I know I'm not the best judge of whether my proposed building, building fits in with this character and that you are, so I'm very eager to have your view. I got the sense at the last meeting that the board was not willing to approve the building as presented, so I took the time to look at some economical proposals such as the fenestration and well, the siding was not particularly economical, so I looked at the, I looked at the suggestions from the last meeting. And so I looked into the fenestration and, and deciding, which was economically not, not in the picture. Maybe I'm a little gun shy, but I simply am not sure whether a handful of windows perforating the otherwise solid facade is sufficient to change to make, to meet the board's objection. The dilemma, the dilemma I face is that the typical way of getting an answer to this question, filing a site plan that dots all the i's and crosses the t's is pretty expensive. While the expense is certainly worth it and reasonable, if there's a fair chance that the board would approve the plan, it is a quite burdensome way to find out that five windows doesn't do the trick and that the big metal box is not appropriate. It is not only burdensome, I would suggest that the elaboration of the site plan is unnecessary to a determination of the aesthetic suitability of the proposed structure. Topographical maps and drainage plans and the like will add nothing to the record as far as the aesthetics go. In order to avoid this burden, I'm asking the board to weigh the architectural suitability of the proposal in isolation as a preliminary matter. In making this suggestion, I am fully cognizant of two things. If the board says it won't fly, I cannot here thereafter be able to complain that it acted prematurely. I don't get two bites at that apple. Second, if the, if the board preliminarily and provisionally approves the architecture, then I do have to submit the site plan and submit to a further session where other interested parties might appear and persuade the board that the plan is inappropriate. In short, I will be bound by decision, by a decision that the plan is not appropriate, but no one else will have their right to object prejudice. I'm willing to run that risk because I would rather learn earlier than later that this proposal in the board's eye is inappropriate. That not only saves me a substantial monetary outlay, it saves me a lot of time. Now, I suppose one could say that expense goes with life and it is what it is. But unless I read the relevant ordinance and bylaws completely incorrectly, that need not be the case here. The land use ordinance at section 1306 seems to grant the board a full measure of authority to tailor its procedures to meet this very situation. I can read the ordinance if you want, but in essence, it says the board has complete power to modify the application procedure to spare the applicant an unnecessary burden. And filing a comprehensive site plan that in no way will bear on the aesthetic appropriateness of the proposed building is to my way of looking an entirely unnecessary burden. Again, if the board decides the design is inappropriate, there's my answer and this application is at an end. If on the contrary, it accepts it, then I can proceed to the comprehensive site plan review, confident that I'm not on a fool's errand, but mindful that if someone else raises an objection subsequently, the board is entitled to take a second look. Now, maybe the board itself will say that it does not want to get involved in piecemeal and ad hoc decision making. Obviously, you are the judge of that, but I don't see how section 1306 could have any applicability without the board's willingness to do just that. I don't think considering the issue as a preliminary matter increases the board, the board's burden at all. Indeed, if it finds the proposal inept, it spares the board the need to consider all the ancillary matters in the site plan. It also spares the butters the need to come and voice their opinions if they have them. And if looking at the architectural issue in isolation requires a tad more effort than weighing it as part of an all-inclusive site plan, it does so in a very minimal way. I would hope the board would be willing to accept that minimal burden to spare the very material effort and expense of preparing a detailed site plan that is completely unnecessary if the board finds the proposed design inappropriate. Indeed, I would suggest bifurcating the process in this way makes sense. Whenever approval rests on one or two discrete issues and citing those issues as a preliminary matter can spare the landowner the expenses attendant on a comprehensive application and the board the need to review a complete application. And that's my spiel, sorry, without the video.
Okay, no problem. Well, thank you for those, those remarks, Greg. We certainly understand your position. Is it, let me just make sure I understand, it's, it's true that nothing in the preliminary plan you submitted last time has changed, is that correct?
So I could get, I could put five windows onto the route one facing side of the building, but I could not, so siding is like minimum $23,000 to, to put siding on the sides that are visible. That's nothing on the back because obviously the back is just facing the swamp. So so I mean, there is that, I did actually make a, an elevation. I didn't think that the five windows were likely to make a big difference, so I, I haven't sent that. But it's essentially, it's essentially unchanged except for five four foot, five four foot windows.
Okay.
And that's, and that's pretty much what is economically doable to this building. Because as I, as I mentioned at the previous meeting, it's a building that is, it's in a warehouse somewhere. It's a clearance metal building in a warehouse that can be shipped or not shipped. And if it can be put up, it'll get shipped and put up, and if it can't be put up, then it won't. But there's not a lot that can be done on, on, you know.
Okay, and again, by way of introductory remarks here, let me just say that this planning board is certainly encourages small businesses within Rockport, businesses that comply with the land use ordinance. Your business and other small businesses are important to the town, the vitality of the town. In a slightly different vein, we in enforcing the land use ordinance, want to make sure that we protect individuals such as yourself and others by just enforcing the land use ordinance requirements uniformly across the town. So with that, if Greg, if, if you're done, I'll go ahead and open it to the board for deliberation here. We did go through this last time. I think that there were some comments that were along the line of the architectural aspects of this building. And is there anything that causes you to change your, your mind or the windows on the front that would cause you to change your opinion? Gian, are you speaking? You're muted.
Yes, I'm wondering what the dimensions of the possible windows would be.
They would be four foot by four foot evenly spaced along the, the front of the building.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, hearing no other comments.
I would just jump in that. I'm not quite sure what we're being asked to address here. We've got a kind of a vague description in my mind, a vague description of basically just putting windows on the street side of the building that's already in the plans, possibly adding vinyl siding to it. Is that what I understand?
No, vinyl siding is not going to go onto it.
So you're, you're just gonna put windows on it?
Yes, just windows, even, even cheap. I, I don't even know if the, the cheap vinyl siding that comes out to $23,000 would be persuasive. But it's, it's too much, so, so to go to a, you know, a siding that would be persuasive, I think, you know, it would be more than $23,000 is too much. I can't do that.
Okay, so let me try to stay here. What I believe that we're trying to do as a board here. This is a pre-application. We're not going to take any votes on this. We're going to provide some feedback to the applicant. Last time, we provided feedback to the applicant that we saw, thought that the architectural details of this big box building as Greg referred to it would not be acceptable due to the architectural aspects in that neighborhood. And so I think what we're asking this evening is based on Greg's letter, some of the other perspectives he's, he's mentioned there. Would the board change its concerns about the architectural aspects of this building? And I think we want to be fair to Greg here in that we don't want to mislead him or lead him on. We don't think this building is going to fit in that neighborhood. I'd like to just convey that, which I think we did last time, and let us both move on. So is anyone feel that their mind has changed that there, that the concerns expressed last time about the architectural aspects could be waived or in some way satisfied with four windows?
And just to clarify, could I ask about the landscaping? The current landscaping is, is there current landscaping that would, that would screen the building from the view of, from, uh, from Commercial Street?
There's not.
Okay, and there's no plan to put in landscaping that would screen the view?
There's, no, I mean, there, there will be some landscaping. I don't know, I mean, we talked about this a little bit and it wasn't clear to me how much landscaping the board would want. The most the most explicit that I have heard wasn't from the board. It was from Scott Bickford, I think is his name, the code enforcement officer. Who suggested I look at the buildings that are across from offshore restaurant where it's a forest and, and that, that kind of landscaping is not on the table. I can't, I mean, I can't put in, I can't put a mature forest in between. It would have to be there already.
Right, I think, I mean, that may be a bit over, overstating what the ordinance is asking for anyways. They're not asking for a forest, but it would stand in place of some of the scrutiny on the architectural features of the building if the building was sufficiently screened through the use of, of landscaping. I think it's sort of like you could use that instead.
I'm hoping that we can, I'm hoping that we can look at this as the, what we can do with the building and if I could get clear guidance, that would be great in terms of the architecture of the building. And I did just want to mention about so I, I'm curious about the application of section 1306 of the land use ordinance, which allows for the modification and, and there are in fact also six A of the bylaws and section eight of the bylaws. All of these give wide latitude to the planning board to decide on procedures, so.
Greg, if I, if I may just read 1306, it states the planning board may modify or waive any of the above application requirements or performance standards when the planning board determines that because of special circumstances of the site or size of the project, such requirements or standards would not be applicable. So circumstances of the site or the size of the project. I don't, I don't know the site and the size are an issue here.
Well, so I would just suggest that as, I believe it was Mr. Rosenbaum put it at the previous meeting, the design question arises out of the site that in certain sites, the aesthetics of this building would not be a problem, but given the particular site, so that is a special circumstance of the site. And so what I would suggest is that it would be a modification of the plan requirements to take this as a preliminary matter to then be followed up with, in the event that it is passed, to then be followed up with a with a full site plan, which is what, this is what I would do. If I, if I were to be told today, this will go, I will bring a full site plan. I would be very happy also to simply have the clarity of this will not pass. It is, I'm mostly looking for clarity.
Right, I understand. Okay, anyone else on? Has this changed from what we discussed last time? John, first?
Well, I just wanted to make sure we're clear. This is a pre-application. We don't vote on, on anything with a pre-application, so what you're asking us for, in my opinion, Greg, is something we cannot do.
Is that really what you're expecting, Greg, is a vote or a formal?
I mean, I suppose if, if the planning board members would each let me know how they would vote, you know, if there were one, that would be the same thing. As far as I'm concerned, a vote would be great. I don't actually, I'm not sure what in the bylaws prevents a vote. It appears that with emotion there can be a discussion, a motion and a second, there can be a discussion and a vote.
Yeah, Greg, I appreciate that.
I don't, I'm, I'm, if, if there is, if there is some limitation, I would certainly appreciate the, you know, the publicly available documents that I can look to, to respond to that.
Okay, Greg, we're trying to be reasonable and giving you feedback. We don't want to lead you on. On the other hand, when we vote, we vote on a full final application. This application is not complete. There's a number of items that are missing, so it would not be fair for us to vote on one aspect without considering the entire site plan. So let's see, John, did you have anything else before we move off you? Okay, Tom, you had your hand. Oh, wait, Jane was first. Let's go to Jan and then to Tom.
Let me ask Mr. McGuire. It's my take on what you're asking is that you would like approval for the project prior to filing a final application with the assumption that unless there isn't a butler who has a serious issue, we will continue to simply approve this application in advance and you will be guaranteed that it will pass. I'm afraid that's not possible.
No, that's not what I'm asking.
Well, then, then please explain to me, one specifically you want us to take?
So I don't think that an opinion of the board on whether or not the, the building is architecturally suitable is asking for approval of the plan. Obviously, all of those other parts of the site plan are necessary for approval of the plan. However, we're talking about many thousands of dollars to make contour maps and to have the engineering done for the appropriate materials and, and fill to build a proposed building that it seems the only, it, it seems there's a major aesthetic issue that the board is unlikely to approve. So I'm, I'm asking you to take that in isolation to say what the board's opinion of the architecture is now. And then if the board says the architecture is fine, then I'll come back with the full site plan review. If the board says the architecture is not okay, we will not approve that, then that's the end of it. And that clarity would be very helpful for me.
Okay, we'll try to get there. Let, let's go to Tom.
Hi, Greg. I, I think I understand what you're getting at and I understand that the full approval of the final site plan would not occur until the final site plan was presented. So what you're looking for is an opinion on this building, this particular building being included as part of a final site plan. And I have to tell you, first of all, your property, I assume that's your home there, that, that house on the property that residents?
Yes, that's correct.
Yeah. I have to say that I have admired that property ever since I've been driving up and down Route One. It's a beautiful piece of property. Yeah, I have to say that I have admired that property ever since I've been driving up and down Route One, it's a beautiful piece of property. You have Penn Bay Vets right next to you, that's another beautiful piece of property, it's forested all around there. And to me, I would continue to have serious concerns about an industrial looking building. Unshielded, facing the road, even next to your property, I mean, to me, that would damage the aesthetics of that entire lot. And it would be an imposition in that neighborhood, that's, that's my opinion.
Thank you.
Okay, so let me just ask at this point, is there anyone on the board that? Has a belief that's inconsistent with what Tom just stated?
I think Tom made a, made a good statement that I could, I would agree with.
Okay, anyone else want to care to comment?
My, my, uh, me also, I would agree with that, yes.
Um, I, I partially agree with it enough that it's, it's an important site.
Yeah, and I, I think there are, as Tom correctly stated, there's some very nice properties, including that one that are around there and structures. Okay, Greg, does that give you um an answer that I, I believe that the board feels that way right now? That unless I, uh, there were some architectural changes that were made to that structure that made it look not so big box. And I think, I'm not speaking on behalf of the board, but I have no problem with the metal structure, we don't dictate how it's, how it's constructed. It's more the uh, the exterior architectural aspects of it, so. That's um, that's the uh, uh, conclusion, uh, Jeff, did you have something else?
Yeah, just one more thing in regards to the thirteen oh six that provides us with latitude to um, see the site. Um, as having unique conditions, I, I would actually be. More uncomfortable with us utilizing that for approval. Um, it, if, if it didn't meet the architectural standards, if we determined it didn't meet the architectural standards. But we were going to use thirteen oh six to approve, I would be.
I, I, I'm. I, I'm not asking you to use thirteen oh six to approve. The building, I'm asking you to use it to render an official decision. So.
In the pre-op review.
Yeah, if you, if you would say, if you would say, I mean, frankly, uh, there's, there's numerous. I mean, there's six A, there's uh, of the bylaws and there's eight that allow you to take a vote. With a motion and a uh, second.
Yeah, but we're, we're not gonna take a vote because we don't have a full application here, Greg, so that's not gonna happen, we're not gonna vote on every single aspect of this.
We, you, it's not every single aspect, it's the, it's the crucial aspect, uh.
I, I think we gave you some pretty good feedback here that none of the board uh is in disagreement with. That would be, we would be highly concerned about approving what you've proposed in your pre-application. We're not against the metal structure, but the way the architectural aspects of this building in that neighborhood would cause the board great concern. So I think that's it, I think that's all we could probably give you right now. Um, if you came back with a final application and you didn't change any of those architectural aspects. Uh, I think we'd, we'd run into problems, so we don't want to mislead you, uh, don't want you to go spend a lot of money uh doing that, uh, we, we'd have those concerns.
Would you mind saying more explicitly than run into problems, run into problems is, it's vague language?
I feel like you're trying to put the board into the middle of a legal contract here, and that's not where the board wants to go to. I think we've given you a very good indication.
I'm asking, I'm asking the board for. A clear answer on a matter in its jurisdiction. And I'm not, not quite getting it, it's, it's real close, but I'm not quite getting it.
Okay, so you're asking us to vote on it and we told you we're not gonna vote on a pre-op. So uh, if, if that's the end of the conversation and that's what you're looking for, um, we've tried to give you as much. Feedback as we could, um, I think that's as far as we could go. Orion, you have any other uh, uh, ideas or thoughts here as to how we could uh, end this?
No, so Greg, as I told you in the beginning when you started this uh pursuit, the only way that you're gonna get any final determination from board, which is a collective board. Is to have a final application for review.
I'm not looking for a final.
That you.
I'm not looking for a final.
The, the board doesn't consider partial applications.
Of the architectural review, which is within, which is within the board's authority and, and duties.
And, and we gave you that feedback, that if a final application came in with those architectural aspects, the board would have serious concerns in approving it.
And I think individually, we gave you our opinions and that's about as far as we can go, is that individually.
Would you?
I personally, one member of the board would raise a lot of issues in regard to the architectural. Um, to meeting the architectural standards, I personally, I'm gonna do the same thing personally when I vote.
All right, Greg, so we don't want you to go to additional expense, needless additional expense, uh, we've given you that feedback on this pre-op with the sketches that we've got. And uh, hope that helps you out, uh, either in changing it or uh, or deciding that it's not the right thing to go forward, so thanks for your time this evening. Okay, um, the next item on the agenda. Is um, reviewing the finding of facts. For um, the subdivision that we reviewed last week. Or last month, sorry, um, let me just find it here, finalize conclusion and finding. Finalized finding of facts and conclusion of law for the West Rockport Meadows subdivision revision. To a major subdivision to merge two lots in the one located at Rolling Meadows, West Rockport. Um, and identified as map sixteen, lot one oh seven dash zero zero five. And map sixteen, one oh seven dash zero zero six. Properties are owned by Paula and Karen Grindel and repres- represented by Greg Hanning. Uh, but actually at the meeting, uh, they were represented by a different individual that's noted in the finding of facts. So Orion, if you could bring that document up. Okay, and there were a few, I think, minor changes on this document that were uh, uh, put in there. I think I actually put in, uh, just identified Greg Hanning as the agent, wasn't actually the owner of the property, represented the owners. Um.
There's a misspelling of Greg's name.
Is it one G?
No, it's H A N, H A I N I N G, Hanning.
Okay, thank you for that, Tom. Okay, um, any other last minute comments on that page, let's go on down?
One N.
One N.
There we go. We listed the sections, the ordinance that we went through, section nine and section eight, the subdivision ordinance. Okay. I don't think there are many comments on this, Orion, I'd like to thank you, did a great job on this, capturing this.
Thank you. I'm just gonna kind of slowly scroll through it, if anybody needs me to stop just.
I, I'm just, I'm just, you can satisfy all of my interests by telling me right upfront that everything that we asked them to do. Uh, as a condition of approval has been done.
Yeah, let's get to, get to that at the end, in the uh, conditions, we're gonna get there. That was my change again, it was not, it was agents for the uh, the owner. And I did make note of the fact there's Ben Hilt that was standing in for Greg, and I guess his name is spelled incorrectly again there.
Yes.
Okay.
That looks right. Okay, so conditions of approval, um, Orion, would you like to start off the discussion on this?
Yeah, so I, I talked to our attorney about um, number two, that I'm subdivision to match throughout the application. And uh, and the covenants and deed restrictions, because uh, the applicant said there were some complications in making uh, some of that happen, there was an S. Um, in one of them and it's already been included in other covenant and deeds and the such. So he said that he couldn't do it, so I asked our attorney like, how hard do we need to pan down to make that happen? And he said, as long as it's a condition of approval and it's on your findings of facts and, and it's on the site plan. Then whenever they come for a permit to build, if the code officer has a concern, the code officer will bring it up saying this doesn't match. But more likely what will happen is the financing agent will say, you know, the covenants don't match and there's a. Um, 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 condition of approval that hasn't been satisfied, so therefore we're not going to finance it. But from the town side, this is as far as we really go, so we've, as the board, you have major conditions of approval, you've stated it, it's in this final decision, it is on the site plan. And from that point forward, it's a final matter in making sure that it gets satisfied, now, there are some checks depending on the condition of approval. Whenever they go for their permit to build, you know, the code officer is gonna ensure that it has been satisfied before issuing the permit, so that's when that follow-up will really happen, so a lot of times. Um, you know, the condition will be satisfied before you sign it.
Okay, so let me just try to restate it simply, um, so this was a condition of approval. Item two has not been completed, so this subdivision change is not approved, is that true?
Um, yeah, I guess that's one way of saying it, so it's, 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 it's. It's approved, it will, um, if they make the um, uh, what's it called, a lot merger through a deed, um, merger, um. And that gets to Knox County, the Knox County sends it over to our assessors, if the assessors do that merger of the two lots, I mean, that'll be there. But once the permit gets submitted to have the construction done. And then that makes it to the code officer and the code officer looks at it and pulls out the plan to make sure everything's done, sees the conditions, says, oh hey, hold on a minute. And then that's when it'll probably be caught, so it's more costly on the owner, it's more costly on the subdivision, that route versus satisfying ahead of time, but. At this end, this is as far as we can really go, that's comfortable from our attorney's perspective.
I, I, I thought it was more than just an S, but I, I thought their names were substantially different, but it would just be easier if everybody just fixed it now for everybody involved.
Yeah, no, I agree.
So, we have no ability to influence the county of Knox in accepting the lot change. They could do that even though the municipality has not approved it.
So there could be, and, and this just all depends on timing. Um, when, so, so once all the signing's done with the site, uh, site plan, I get sent to Knox County. And how they review, if they catch it in time, they might catch it and say, there's a condition of approval. I see these covenant restrictions and I, I don't like them, so you know, you might have to change it there. So it's, it just depends on timing and how it flows through and all the red tape in everybody's office, but at any rate, any permit. And, and this is kind of a minor, you know, condition of approval. Um, this would be more on the financing side of it, but if there was something else like development related. Certainly, the code office would take care of it.
I, I mean, a substantive part of the change here is to put the two lots together, which really is no issue. I don't think anybody in the board had any, any problem with any of that, this is just a technicality and that names don't match in the documentation. It, like you said, it's probably gonna be an issue for the owners somewhere down the road. Maybe.
Yes.
Um, can we just jump back to one for a minute, was one satisfied?
Yes, that was, that was satisfied.
Okay, so we did at least get a letter from the property owners that they knew about this.
Oh yeah.
That's a good thing. Jan, does that answer your question?
Uh, it does, doesn't make me that comfortable with approving it, but it does answer my question.
Okay, Tommy, you have your hand up.
Yeah, I have the same concern that Jan does, if we specify something as a condition of an, of approval. And we know it has not been executed, then how can we approve it?
I guess think of, think of it this way, so if, if they've approved it before. You know, you're, you're done here, then it's not really a condition of approval, and it's therefore no, no need to. Uh, you know, so you wouldn't issue a condition of approval, at that point, you could just say, um, um. Pending approval, we need these further items satisfied, and then they'd have come back before the board. To present like these two items, for example, to show that they've satisfied, that some communities do that, depending on how, how they, or how their offices are staffed. But with a condition of approval, it allows things to keep moving and it's just satisfied by the applicant.
Well, okay, so let me try to separate things here, when we say we're gonna approve something, we're approving the finding of facts tonight as being correct. And the finding of facts have the conditions of approval correctly stated in them. So I, I believe, and others may have different opinions, but I believe that the finding of facts as they're stated are correct. And I think what Orion's explained is that until those conditions of approval are met, both those two items. From a town of Rockport standpoint, the subdivision change is not approved until those conditions are met, did I state that correctly?
That is correct.
Okay.
It may not matter to them. It may not matter to them.
It may not, and you know, um. Um, just to throw out another example, if, um, say the budding landowner over there who was notified about this. And sees that they're building and notices that this hasn't been satisfied, if they could sue them, so.
Okay, but you're saying Scott wouldn't issue a building permit until these conditions are satisfied?
Right, and if something got through the, through the, through the loophole and he did issue a permit. But at any rate, with this particular item right here, um, our attorney has said that that would be a private matter and the town won't get involved with number two. I'm, I'm just saying in general, if there's a condition of approval, but I mean. But utilizing this number two, the name of the subdivision to match throughout the application on the site plan and. On the covenant deed restrictions, that is something that the board has put on there, as you've got a concern, your condition of approval. The town, however, we will not get involved in a legal matter on that, that side.
No, but you wouldn't issue a building permit either.
If Scott catches it, that's correct.
Okay.
Really, Joe, the only time that Scott would not issue a burnt building permit would be if the building permit happened to cross. What is for our purposes now a boundary line, for their purposes is no boundary line.
That's correct.
Yeah, and so if they, if, if the building happens entirely in one of those two sections.
Right.
Scott's not gonna care about it.
Right. And, and the other aspect would be the town assessor in that these lots would not be combined together and they would still be taxed separately.
Correctly, correct.
Yeah. John?
So, um, you know, getting comfortable with all this process for finding of facts and, you know, this new way we're doing things here. I'm just curious, like, how, how significant is this finding of fact or this condition of approval? And what would be, would it be possible for us to just decide to amend our conditions of approval? And what would be, would it be possible for us to just decide to amend our conditions of approval now before we approve these and just drop it all together and not, I mean, is it materially affect anything here, really? I mean, are we just splitting hairs?
Yes.
We're wasting a lot of time splitting hairs here.
So this, I think this is, is, is a good condition of approval in here. If I had concerns about it, I would have brought it up in the beginning. This really shows the thoroughness of this board, really, that you, you've firmly read everything. And if anything else, that I, I think the financing agents, if they look at this, they'll, they'll see and say, wow, the board caught that, so interesting, and they might look at it a little bit further. But the format here, the final decision, the condition of approval, that's imperative to do. I wish there was a different example in here that I could kind of talk to, but there's not one right now.
Okay, so I, I think one of the options is that the board could just go ahead and approve the finding of facts the way they are. And it would be the town, the code enforcement officer's responsibility to adjudicate and decide how he handles these conditions.
No.
I don't, I don't know that we need to be concerned about how it's resolved. We're not, we're not walking away from our, you know, our ability here to cite any incongruencies that existed in the application. We've done that, we put a condition in, it's up to the town now as to how they're going to go forward and enforce that. So I would, I would suggest we approve the finding of facts the way they are.
Could I, not to, not to belabor this point, but is the, the text of the second condition of approval written the way that everybody on the board, um, uh, intended? So it says the name of the subdivision to match throughout the application, semicolon, on the site plan and on the covenant deed restrictions. Is that to say that the covenant deed restrictions, the site plan, and all mentions of it on the application are all to be corrected? Or are two out of three of those to be corrected, or is only one, just the application?
Yeah, there should be, it should be commas, Jeff.
Right.
Yeah, the semicolon threw me off.
Just the, you are correct, the semicolon should be a comma.
Okay.
And I'm one of those guys that
And also after site plan.
The other comma as well, but I won't argue for it, because
Serial commas.
It's not required any longer, but it's, 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 to me, it makes reading it more sensible, but this certainly should not be a cap, semicolon. All three of those are, are, um, requirements that we have.
Right, that's how I remembered it.
Orion, let me ask, was it just the subdivision name, or was it also the name of the HOA or the LLC that owned it?
Oh, I see. It was, it was, it was the LLC.
Yeah, it was a mishmash in there. When I remember looking at it last month. I didn't pay specific attention to which one, because none of them matched. Subdivision comma LLC?
No. Apostrophe.
Apostrophe LLC. Apostrophe S.
Apostrophe S. So I recall that y'all, you know, you all found there was a, a West Rockport Meadow LLC and a Rest Rockport Meadows LLC. That was, that was what.
Yeah, I thought it was more significant than that, the differences, but I, I probably wouldn't argue it over and ask. Okay, are we okay with that statement there?
It has to be subdivisions apostrophe S.
Okay.
Or just subdivision LLC, but not, certainly not, yes, that's fine.
Yeah.
Now, um, correct me if I'm wrong, but there's a difference between approving the findings of fact and approving what came before the board.
Correct.
Yeah.
The finding of facts is documenting what was stated during the review.
And this is what we did, and this is what we stated, and this is what we put down, and there's no problem with, with approving this document without saying that we are approving the, the, anything of the subdivision. There's nothing, there's nothing for us to approve. Guy owns the property, he could do what he wants with it. I'm surprised he gave us in the first place. I wouldn't have.
Okay, all we're doing here tonight is we're just reviewing the finding of facts, just to make sure it's accurate, that's all.
That's right. That's right, and it is.
All right.
I make a motion to approve the findings of facts as, as amended.
Great, second.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Tom. Uh, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Five zero zero. Approved.
Nice job on those, Orion.
Thank you.
Yeah. Okay. Let's move on to, um,
Real quick, Joe, can you, can we get a motion? Have you signed the findings of facts?
Sure. Uh, so we make a motion to have the chair sign the finding of facts to represent the board?
I'll move, I'll move to have Joe sign the finding of facts.
Second.
Second.
All in favor? Okay, five zero zero, approved.
Thank you.
Okay. Uh, move on to item four. Um, I put item four on here, um, just because I received an email from someone on ORC, Mr. Bob Ball. Um, who talked and introduced the subject of LD two thousand and three. Um, and the impact it would have on the local land use ordinances. And so there's no specific action that needs to come out on this tonight. But what I wanted to do was just give the board an opportunity to at least read through LD two thousand and three. Get familiar with what it's stating, because I know that ORC is working on some changes related to this. Um, so that when they come through, we'll at least be educated enough to understand what it is. And so now I'll turn it over to Orion, just to give a quick, brief overview of LD two thousand and three.
Yeah, so, uh, real quick, LD two thousand and three, regardless of what Bob, Bob Ball said, Bob Ball sent kind of a little summation about it, and then he also sent a copy of LD two thousand and three. And then I, I talked to them a little bit about it because of what the ordinance review committee and what the town is going to do with regards to LD two thousand and three. And he, he requested to have that pulled from the file, so I, I pulled it from the file. But LD two thousand and three is, um, affordable housing, uh, legislation attempt by the state to increase, um, affordable housing in the state of Maine and also additional dwelling units that are very small. Um, a lot of towns are having some heartburn about LD two thousand and three and what that's going to do to their community. A lot of them are fighting it, a lot of them don't know what to do, a lot of them aren't sure how to implement it. And we're kind of taking the same stance because of the, um, ambiguity within the language. And our attorney is also advising us to kind of hold off a little bit, so what we're proposing is to change a little bit to kind of, kind of match a little bit to, to, I guess, to show on record that we're trying uh, to put something into effect about LD two thousand and three. But not the full bow, uh, uh, full amount of what LD two thousand and three is. So LD two thousand and three goes into effect in July, July one, unless the state decides to punt it, which there's talks of doing, there's talks of keeping, and I'm not sure. But if that rides, then, um, I forget the exact number, but you can disregard all parking requirements, um, anywhere. And add additional dwelling units as small as a hundred and, I think, eighty square feet is the minimum requirement, or a little bit less. So, um, it's going to be complicated to put into our ordinance. And with the understanding of it, some people interpret it differently than others. And where we can get ourselves into a big legal lawsuit is if we interpret it incorrectly. So LD two thousand and three rides, no matter what we do. So if anybody that is interested in taking advantage of LD two thousand and three, they can do so just by referencing it. Then we as a town can monitor what they're doing with it, how they're doing it. And then we can propose an ordinance amendment that satisfies it or makes it better. I'm not sure yet, but at any rate.
So should the planning board expect to review a document in the next month or two, uh, any changes to any of our ordinances?
Yes, there's going to be a few unrelated to LD two thousand and three, but what I have on the screen is what the ORC is putting together.
Okay.
Regarding LD two thousand and three, which is just changing a couple of items.
Okay, John?
So, um, I'm looking at the section three hundred definitions, and I don't see a definition of, of accessory dwelling unit. Um, is, are they planning to do, to give us a definition for that, Ryan?
No, I guess they're, they did not propose that.
I thought I saw definitions somewhere, maybe it wasn't included in this document, but I thought I did see definitions.
Um, well, it's, it's not in our definition section, and there we've got uh, accessory buildings, we've got accessory use, but we don't have accessory dwelling unit. And that's a very specific term in this, so.
Right, I was intending to mean that I saw definitions associated with LD two thousand and three. I, I don't know if we have the exact same ones.
Okay.
Okay, so the only action at this time, I just throw this out there, so the board could maybe just take a quick read through this, be familiar with it. So that when changes come through in the ordinance that reference LD two thousand and three, that will at least know where they came from and, um, hopefully be able to, uh, um, agree or disagree with, with what we see there. So that's, that's all we're going to accomplish tonight.
Okay.
I, I just have one more question on this, Joe. Um, so, you know, without a definition, I'm not quite sure what, what we're talking about here. We're, you know, I'm assuming the intent of an accessory dwelling unit is to create a second uh, residence on a given parcel of land. Is that, is that generally what we're talking about?
Yes.
And would it be for uh, the, I think the intent of, intent of this is somewhere else in here about affordable housing as opposed to short-term rentals?
Yeah.
Not a fair, fair statement?
Yeah, so the attempt is to increase housing stocks so that we would have affordable housing, but nothing in there restricts it from going right on the short-term rental.
So in terms of our definition for our ordinance, I would love to see a distinction made. Um, so that the intent of this law is sustained, so that we're talking about affordable housing, not getting rid of parking requirements for short-term rental units.
Yeah, so that's where, that's, so it starts off with affordable housing, and if you wanted to get increased density for affordable housing subdivision, you could do that through LD two thousand and three. And then it goes on to additional dwelling units, and the additional dwelling units, you, you know, they're in, the intention was, but it doesn't state in there about keeping them as affordable. So that's where, that's kind of where we're wondering what's going to happen, so, um, people can now, once this goes into effect, in essence, have a bunch of short-term rentals.
Orion, where do I go to get a copy of the?
I will, I will send you a copy.
Thank you.
Jeff, you have your hand up?
Yeah, sure. So Orion, you said that this would eliminate parking requirements. Um, is that throughout the town or only in the traditional, um, where we've defined it?
That would be, uh, throughout the town. If you wanted to have an additional parking unit or a, an additional dwelling unit and our ordinance calls for, you know, whatever, I'll make up a number right now, because I don't know off the top of my head. Um, for each additional dwelling unit, you would have to have two parking requirements, say that's what our ordinance said.
The way this is, the way this is written, um, under the, um, lowercase i item, it says one additional is parking space, no additional parking spaces shall be required in addition to the spaces required for the principal use. It's, it's a little bit muddy the way they've written that, because it sounds like if you had a non-conforming principal use, um, you would be required to meet the requirement for the principal use first before you were not required to add any more additional spaces.
I see what you're saying here, that makes sense.
So if you had a multifamily, or if you had a duplex, say, I don't know if these exist, but if you have a duplex that had um, two parking spaces, you'd be required to get two more, which is the requirement, two per dwelling unit before you can add the ADU, and that seems like it's going against what they're trying to do.
Yeah. Yeah.
Also, the affordable housing definition is referring to the, the main statute in thirty A forty-three sixty-four, um, which defines affordable housing developments. And it's not really a one-to-one definition here to, to refer to that statute. Um, it, it kind of works and it kind of doesn't. Um, so they all go to, they all go to HUD, so it, it, it can be understood, but it's still, it's a little bit.
So, well, the, I guess, um, the words he's, we're trying to make is, is instead of saying housing for people earning eighty percent below their median income, yeah, that's kind of like a very definitive thing, it's just default to whatever the definition is elsewhere, so that's probably, I don't think they've changed that, so that's more like affordable housing, yes, but.
But it says for definition and related rules and regulations, it's sort of like, you know, and everything else that MRS A forty-three sixty-four says, which is a lot more.
Yeah.
Under a definition, it seems kind of like, not the right place to do it, but I understand what they're trying to do.
It's too broad.
Yeah.
Okay, um, so that's there for you to take a look at. If I can, I'd like to move on to, um, other business, uh, let's see, well, actually, I thought we had, um, solar farm under that. Is there other business? Anybody have anything? Oh, it is, okay. For some reason, I didn't look that way. Okay, so other business is a solar farm. Okay, let's go to the solar farm ordinance. Uh, there were a number of changes there, hopefully everybody had a chance to review that. Um, all the way down the bottom. First folder. The word document. Okay, so just a, a little bit of explanation here. What I did is, last time we went through, um, we examined, uh, some of the other surrounding town ordinances. And we looked at what sections they addressed in their solar farm ordinances, we looked at what we addressed in the Rockport one as it now stands. And we made a determination last time that it would be worthwhile to add some additional definition to our ordinance. And so those were the boxes that were checked on the, uh, the spreadsheet, uh, matrix that we had. So what I did is I went through and I, um, picked out, uh, sections out of some of those other ordinances and pasted those in um, where they might fit into the current Rockport ordinance. And so that was the red, uh, that's there, it was a, a change, so we could track it. And then, um, I know some of you went through and made some comments on that, and that's what we'll run through tonight, is those comments. So, um, I don't know, maybe rather than trying to do this in real time, Orion, make those changes. I don't know, maybe you can keep up, maybe you won't keep up, but at least we can agree or disagree on the comments that are in here. Um, so I suggest we just go right down the line and, um, read through the comments on the right-hand side. Um, and, uh, determine if the board agrees or disagrees. So, so one of the issues here was just what to refer to it as. Um, in many cases, I've seen SES, solar energy system. I think John's proposing large solar energy system, um, instead of solar farm. I, I agree with that, I think that fits fine. Everybody okay with that? Large solar energy system? So we go through and just make the references consistent.
So are you going to put a definition in? You need to add a definition.
Of what a SES is, a large solar energy system?
Yeah.
Good point, we'll do that. Richard, I assume you're here representing ORC?
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, let's dinner.
Yeah, I think further on in definitions, there's, we call it in here, ground-mounted solar energy system, so I would. You know, I think if we just change the name there and use that definition, we've got what you're talking about, Richard.
That's fine.
Yeah, that's the kind of thing I was saying, if we just got the titling to line up, everything else is pretty much there.
Oh, I just have one question. A couple of places, it says information requirements and information is capitalized, is there some reason for that?
Uh, which section you're in? Where are you?
Look at the first section right there, that first red paragraph, about five lines down, it's. Information required.
Information, I don't think there's any reason that's. No, information format could probably both be lowercase there. Yeah, I don't think that's in the note, Orion, I think it's actually in the red paragraph there, it's like the, yeah, right there. And format, yeah. All right, next one, Jan's comment, um, all references including. Oh wait, did we finish up on John's? Did John ask if it was considered a farm? Um, is it a form of farming? Or agriculture? Um, I don't think it is. Is there a reason that it's ordered that way?
I think that's, I, I think that's colloquial, a colloquial usage. As opposed to a technical usage, I think it's just cute.
Okay, so. So if we take the reference out, if we take the reference out of a solar farm and call it a solar energy system, I think that would eliminate that.
Yes, yes. Whether or not it's a public utility, of course, depends on what's being done with the power.
Yeah, that, that was more my point, it, like, where is it? Is it fish or foul, you know?
Yeah.
We, we haven't, we don't have, this doesn't fit anywhere, from what I can tell, although technically, if you wanted to think it. You know, think of it in the, under the definition that we have for. Um. I think it's rural. Which implies farming, I guess, um. No, that's not where I saw it, where did I see it? Agriculture use, agricultural use, I think has, that's where it was, um. You know, we have like a, a definition for aquaculture, we got a definition for agriculture, prints or farming, and. I like, almost like that, I think it fits, cause it talks about, um. Yeah, where is it? No, that's not where it was. Somewhere there was a reference to. You know, making use of the resources. Does that sound familiar to anybody in terms of a definition? Thought it had something to do with farming.
I don't know if it'd be considered a, a public utility, it's almost like a private utility, it's kind of.
That's, it, it's almost, maybe we just need to have a.
I, I would think that's also a matter of ownership, I mean, if the town of Rockport builds a solar farm. Or a large energy system, then that's a public utility, but um. And, and that's a question of, of how the, how the, the energy is being dispersed. Um, so I, I think that large-scale, um, large solar energy system is neutral and accurate. Yeah, and eliminates the idea of, um. Because we talk about resource-based opportunity, that sounds to me more like mining than farming.
Well, they both use the sun, they can't grow crops without the sun.
No, but mining is certainly a resource-based opportunity and you don't need the sun for it, and in fact, it's all done in the dark. So, resource-based to me. You're being too. I don't know, too high-class. Let's not worry about that so much, farming is growth, is growing. Is food-oriented. Well, no, it isn't, cause it's tree-oriented as well, I don't know, but I, I would rather get away from the word farming, because it's, to, to me, it's, it's a word that. Is just weighted with all kinds of.
Right, and so I think we've agreed to do that, we're gonna change it to a solar energy system.
Good.
Okay, go back, uh, next to, uh, Jan's next comment here. Um, all references, including for pharmacy, should be right at the start. And what's that connected to?
Well, it's just a matter of where you put definitions, that, that's all, but there is a section for definitions, and if that seems to be the way that we write ordinances, then I'm.
Okay, so I would think that there would be a definition if required in the destination section.
Yeah. Definitely.
Okay, next one. Keep with minor logical changes, items A, E, F, G. What's?
That is, those items, I think, should be kept. And there's only, there's only minor, minor changes in them, that's all.
Okay, so something editorial on those, or?
Right.
Okay.
Like B, so the next comment about B is. Um, that requires a little bit more, a little bit more rewording, as far as I'm concerned, that's all.
Okay, so let's, let's talk about that one a little bit more, that's more specific, site ownership and leasing documents. Um, if any, shall be submitted with the application.
I'm adding here key technical employees.
Okay. Okay. Yep, good, good, good catch, anybody have a problem with that? Okay. All right, so let's, um, let's go and keep that, and again, I don't know if you want to try to do this on the fly, Orion, or if we just want to go back and do those.
I think that's asking a lot.
Yeah, I think so too.
Yeah.
All right, so we're gonna, we're gonna take that. Incorporate, good. Next one down. Uh, maximum energy plan for production, uh, and distribution of such shall be listed. Um, so I agree with part of this in that, um, maximum amount of energy planned for production is a reasonable thing. Um. You, you don't necessarily know who, who it's gonna be distributed to. Um, because you get people to sign up for, uh, almost like partial ownership in these farms. And that could happen in the future.
No, that's, I, I'm, no, then I wrote it wrong, that's not what I meant, what I meant was, is this being sold for profit? Or is this being fed back into a system, into a, a general system? That is, who is using, not who particularly, but what, what's the class of use that's going on here?
But, does that e- even matter?
Well, you know, I don't know, I mean, I, was a suggestion that came to my mind, if you, you don't like it, I'm fine with that. If it, if it doesn't, if it's not important, it shouldn't be added.
I, I don't know, why would that be important to the community or the board? I don't know, do we care? I, I don't know that we could determine that, for example, that only people within the town are allowed to use it, that's not within our authority.
And things may change over time, too.
Yeah, yeah, I would suggest we delete that, that phrase.
Fine, dump it.
Well, not, uh, the maximum amount of energy is okay. But not who, where the production's gonna go to.
Is the maximum amount something that we can determine, um, you can determine on the initial. Application and the initial installation, but, I mean, just, you know, solar panels have been increasing in their. Um, efficacy throughout the years, does that prevent somebody from replacing the panels with higher quality or more efficacious panels?
In, in my mind, this is strictly informational, how big is the field gonna be?
Um, not in my mind. Because in, in, in my mind, if you go a, above a five, you know, if you, if you, we, if we authorize a five-megawatt. Um, facility.
Right.
And all of a sudden, owner just says, let's make it a twenty-megawatt facility, we may want. Additional safety precautions for that, we, we may want additional technical staff, I don't know what we want. But I think that when you design a plant, you design it for a specific amount. And if you're going to make a change in it, you ought to have to come before the town to get permission to do that.
Yeah, so that's interesting, um, is, is that how you'd? I don't know how you'd specify that, I understand what you're saying, Jane, and that's reasonable. Would you specify based on the number of panels, ba- based on the number of megawatts, based on the ground coverage?
I would base it, I would base it on megawatts. Because what I'm worried about is the energy. Not worried about the shade or the number of panels, I'm worried about the, what happens to all the energy.
Well, if you give the information to the applicant and say, look. You know, you might want to give us a range. Because that allows you to upgrade panels later than to be locked into a specific output.
Yeah. I'm not saying that it can't change in the future, that we wouldn't allow it, but I think knowing what the maximum design capability, design capacity is. Is of use.
Just thinking back, I don't think this is an issue for the applicant to tell us. What their initial um, amount of energy produced is, because I think both of the previous solar farms actually gave us this information. I, I don't think they consider that a inconvenience.
I don't think so. That, that's how they design the farm.
So you brought up an interesting uh, point though, Jan, in that if somebody goes back and modifies a solar farm. Can they go ahead and just do that? If they want to put more panels in, for example.
Um.
Well, the way, the way that we're talking about the max amount of energy planned for production shall be listed. Doesn't say that they can't change it, it just says they're telling us what it is that they're planning.
Correct, correct.
Yes.
But let's say that they had uh, ten percent lot coverage, and then they come in and they want to do fifty percent lot coverage, would they be obligated to come back? And ask? To have that approved?
I, no, I think it's, I think what I'm referring to here. Is that it's listed, that is, on the outside of the site, it tells you how many megawatts is, is being produced here, if they decide to double it, let them change the sign. If we want, I mean, if, if Rockport Steel decides to, to, to double the size of their business. Um, and they could do it in a way that doesn't require. Any physical change to the building, do they have to come before, be before their planning board and say, we're gonna be, uh. Three times the size of foundry than, than we were before, I, I don't know what we do with other businesses, if a business is enlarging. And they deal in a, um. Possibly dangerous, um, substance, I would think we would want. To make sure that it's being enlarged in a safe and effective.
Okay, I think everybody agrees with this statement, let's, let's agree with it and move on. Uh, next one. Copy the contract or memorandum of understanding between the solar energy system operators. And its customer shall be included. I, I think that once, uh, again, for the reason we stated previously, is problematic, in that they may not know who their customers are.
I, yeah, I gave it to you, you're right.
Okay, delete?
Yep.
Okay. Next one. Uh, substitute. Operation, maintenance and safety plan for operation and maintenance. Okay, I think we talked about safety somewhere else, but that's fine to have that as part of the application, I have no problem with that, anybody else? Objection? Okay. Next one. Keeping a names and contact information for emergency shall be posted clearly at the site. In Rockport. Give to Rockport Police Fire Department of Public Works. Okay.
That's good.
Yep. Incorporate. Okay, next one. Uh, J, substitute financial and technical capacity. For financial, that's reasonable. Okay, incorporate that.
Yeah.
Line K with L, reference to ordinances. K with L. So you're putting together onsite vegetation control. And buffering and screening.
Yeah. I don't care if you do that or not, if you put it, combine them together, I just thought.
Yeah, I don't care.
Reasonable thing to do.
No pesticides.
I, yeah, I thought we did say that later on, that there would be no pesticides used.
Okay.
But, uh, go ahead, yeah, yeah, so that's incorporate, that's fine, I have no problem with that, put it together.
Turn the sheep loose.
And if we do that, we delete L. Um. Okay. And M now becomes L, change division to planning board, yeah, again, that was cut and paste.
Exactly.
Yep. And now M.
Yeah.
I don't know, would you, I probably can just take out editorial comment, just take out non-Rockport, but just leave it state and federal.
Bye.
Orion, is that what's reasonable there? State and federal?
Yeah, that, that, that's fine.
That probably covers it.
It does. That works.
Okay. So incorporate. Uh, is that a comment or is that just a statement, it looks like a statement?
I, it's, I, I just thought it would be important, reasonable to say that I've read these and they're fine.
Okay.
I agree with them, that's all, that's all.
Got it.
So. You know, you can, you can erase this also.
Okay.
We've taken care of it.
Okay, next one.
One thing I've noticed, as I drive by a couple of these roads going up to these solar panels. That there's, uh, there's no chain, there's no, uh, uh, gate in any way. Um, to prevent somebody. From four-wheeling up there or driving a truck up there, uh, so I think once. Um, the system is in place, there ought to be some. Way of restricting the access. Um, to the general public.
Yeah, and that's in here, here, I'm surprised though that you've seen that, because they could be dangerous.
Yes.
People go in there. There are some high voltages floating around in there. Um, so on the comment that we're on here, we're gonna get to that, Richard, um, we'll, we'll talk about fencing. Um, on the comment we're on here, um. The twenty acres, um, I put in there, I didn't have no scientific background for.
Yeah, I, I saw it in a bunch of things, I just wondered if there was a reason behind it, or it was just a.
I, I may have pulled that out, out of one of the other ones, but I did not go back. And research it, and so that probably needs more time spent to decide what that should be, that number.
Well, does it matter?
I don't know, let's see, placement and size, solar farms shall only be permitted in nine oh eight rural district. A single solar farm installation inclusive of buffers and setbacks shall not exceed. Um, so only if we wanted to somehow limit the size. And not cover an entire mountain. That would be the, the only reason. Do we care?
We know what the size of the current, uh, systems are.
We do, I don't know offhand, but we certainly have that information.
Can't imagine it's much more than five acres.
Right.
And maybe too, too big a number.
If we're worried about how close any, any, any of them are to each other, we should be worried about the size of any one. I would think, right?
Sure.
Oh, sure. One, one thing to take into consideration, and I did a lot of little drawings of it, is. Um, given setbacks and given the amount of space. Between rows, that's necessary for maintenance and for, for what, for access and so forth. Um. If you cut out fifty feet. Back from every, from every side, twenty acre parcel of land, does not come anywhere near twenty acres of solar farm. And so, um. You know, setbacks are fifty feet, the, the. Maintenance in between, and it's somewhere around about ten acres is just. Wasteland that has to be there for access and. Waste land that has to be there for access and maintain maintenance and so forth. So I we may want to have a little more input from from a university or something. Or somebody who knows about large scale solar farming.
I agree.
It's appropriate.
Yep. Um, so could we get more information or something there? Gather more information, yeah, research.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Hmm, is that the same comment?
Yeah.
Yeah. Um, agree with deleting this. Okay. Um, except in an emergency. Oh, is that regarding lights lighting?
Uh, yeah, I think so.
Yes, I think so. Um, so you're just saying add that phrase except in emergency. That's I.
Yes.
That's reasonable.
Yes.
So that would go at the end of the lighting paragraph, I assume.
I believe so, yes.
But I I I don't know. So there other than required lighting would require lighting to satisfy that?
Well, there's a set the sentence says lighting shall not be visible. Or used between between nine P M and seven A M. And I'm just saying, except in case of emergency.
Yep.
Maybe that maybe it just beggars common sense. But.
It hasn't been an issue with the systems that are in place.
I don't I don't think so. Um, let's see which one this is with regard to what lot coverage, lot coverage.
Right.
Okay, and again, this number was uh, cut and pasted uh, from a different ordinance, the twenty percent.
Different, yeah, well, here's my here's my my calculation based on some some or quick re- research that I did. And I and I so I don't know what we're doing to ourselves if we make. As as big a place as twenty acres, an inefficient farm. And we don't know what the actual size is required for something like a five megawatt farm. Um, so it one piece that I looked up. Um, it needs at least twenty acres just to run a five megawatt what what farm. And I don't know about this coverage of twenty percent. How do we determine that? In some things that I've read. It's the ground mounted piece. In some things that I've read, it's the shade cast by the solar panels. And I don't know how we're deciding that that only twenty percent of a lot can be covered. What what really does that amount to?
I think this is very problematic. If you're if you're going to try to limit the size of the the panels. Then you should do it on the megawatt end of things and not try to do it by. Uh, reducing the lot coverage. I mean, you'd be better off to have the megawatts that you want. And give them eighty percent or ninety percent lot coverage on a smaller parcel. Than to let them have a much larger piece and only giving them twenty percent of it.
Yeah, the twenty percent to me is 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 fine. If you're talking about buildings, we're not talking about buildings.
Yeah.
We're talking about air. Um, and so I I think that that we just took that out of or somebody just took it out of their regular lot coverage numbers. When it comes to housing. Um, and and so then I think.
I think it's problematic.
I think it's problematic too.
Uh, what about a butters though? Uh, would the lot coverage affect different butters?
Well, you'd have still have to have your setbacks.
Yes. And height restrictions. And maybe even shielding restrictions, but but um. You're not going to want a lot of trees. In your solar farm. So I don't know, I just think it needs more more looking at.
Yeah, we can get some more information on that.
Okay, put that in the research category.
I just an opinion, I certainly think though that the coverage. Should be in terms of if there is a a coverage specification. It should be in terms of. The solar panels themselves and not the little supports underneath them. To me, that makes no sense at all.
I I agree with that statement, Tom. Okay, next comment. Uh, let's see, solar farm density. Okay, so we talked about this last time. And um, this is just a shot for me that I picked. Two miles.
I think the ones that we have already are closer than two miles.
They could be. They could be. And so again, just to refresh everyone's memory. What we were looking at here was, is it okay to have an area of town that is all solar panels? Um, one adjacent to the other covered in that area. Or would the town want to see them maybe spread out a little bit more? Which becomes problematic when they're trying to connect to a main transmission line.
Right. Right. And are we talking about two miles by road or two miles of the crow flies?
I think it would be as crow flies. So do we still feel like we want this in there? To try to limit density?
No. I think that's micromanaging and you know, in the rural areas, there's only going to be so many southern exposures. Uh, that would even be. Optimal optimal for solar panels. So I.
Okay, so let me take uh, um, that's a reasonable comment. The other side of that would be if I stand on top of beach hill. And I look west like I do now, I see one solar farm. Would it be okay if I looked west and every one of those hillsides was covered with solar panels? Does anybody care?
Well, are those properties in the rural areas or are they in?
They are. Yeah, I think that's all rural out there. Off of seventeen. Does it matter? I I what I think here is I'm trying to think ahead a hundred years. And what it would look like for the people that we leave the town to.
Well, again, I think this gets back to by limiting the megawatt outage. Potential. So if you put a cap on. How much? Can be produced. I think you're going to limit the number of units.
Well, you'll limit the size of us of one farm, but you won't limit the number of farms in an area.
Yeah, you could get around that pretty easy, but just. Chopping up a farm in the.
Yeah, and the the other thing is there is going to be a practical limitation to this. Because the transmission lines that exist here now are not going to going to accept. A large number of solar farms in one area. So there is kind of a practical limitation.
Unless.
Unless they just something modify the transmission line.
Yeah, yeah. Unless the shit hits the fan. Um, for the planet. And we decide that that instead of cutting a fifty foot swath. Uh, through um, through all of our woods to provide an electric line, we're going to cut a hundred foot swath. And then put in some more solar farms. We don't know what conditions are going to be. I agree that we should look a hundred years down down the line at least. Um, but prediction is a is a terrible business to be in.
Yeah.
Well, again, I think this gets back to a study. Uh, in the last comp plan, we looked at, you know, areas that were above a certain altitude. You could you could study all the potential places. Uh, for solar farms. And get that information. How big are those lots? Uh, would they are they fields now or would they become fields? Um, and then you'd have an inventory of potential. Future sites. Which would give you more information than just guessing.
Good idea.
Well, would it be better to put in a some kind of a limit at some point and then? You know, as opposed to just leaving it completely wide open and having a problem that we can't reel back in later on? I mean, you know, which way do we want to come at this? We want to leave it wide open and just let people go everywhere and pretty soon we got them everywhere and we can't. Pull it back as opposed to slowly open it up.
I I'm for the latter. I don't think it should be the wild west. Um, but we do need to, and I think we can do the research. Easily within the amount of time. That people are going to take to develop more and more solar farms. Solar area, solar. Large scale solar equipment. Whatevers. Um, but we do need to think and think along the future, what's going to happen.
And so is the board thinking that we do want these concentrated in a single area or spread out or doesn't matter?
For me, I would leave it in the rural district for now. I don't think.
Anywhere in the rural district.
Well.
And.
I. I I don't know.
So right now, if there's a transmission line over there by seventeen where the two current solar farms are. If we get three more or five more over there, is that okay?
I think the electric. Of the 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 grid will appreciate the solar farms being located where the grid is.
Yep.
I mean, West Rockport has a substation which is very handy.
I like I like limiting it to the rural district for a practical sense that it that it limits development to places where. You know, it's less controversial, but I do the 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 example I I thought of last time we discussed this was. Say, um, perhaps got Bay Medical Center, if they wanted to cover their their parking lots with. Solar panels that it would become a large scale um, solar development in and of itself. And while it may serve the hospital, they may create enough. Energy that they could sell it to the grid and it's not tied to a home as the definition had previously said. Um, then that is something that's outside the rural district that I would think we would want to encourage. And so I I don't know if limiting it from that end to the rural district is is completely helpful. And I don't know if there's a way of carving out something to say that, you know, outside the rural district. There's another standard that you have to follow. I mean, that may be going too far, but. Um, like I said at first, I do like limiting it to the rural just because it gives us time.
Now that might be an output issue.
It could be.
I might lose you guys here a little bit here. My. My computer uh. Will be idling down shortly.
Get your maximum screen time for the day.
That's right. I'm down to nine percent on the battery, so.
Ah, that'll do it.
You need a solar farm.
Nearly.
I've got forty gallons on one roof.
Um, what about existing solar systems? Things, uh, what's that relation to?
That was that was a reference to the two miles, Joe. If you look at.
Oh.
If you look at the our Google map. Those two existing systems are right across seventeen from each other.
Yep. Okay.
I would guess it's about less than half a mile.
Okay, so that goes along with researching the item above. And deciding what we want to do there, if anything. Um, next one vegetation management. Woody removal of trees is seems essential for solar farm.
No, there.
Okay, so it says the removal of trees is discouraged, not prohibited.
Right. It just seems anti-intuitive to me. That you would authorize a solar farm but tell them they can't cut any trees down.
Yeah. Yeah. On the other hand, I think what it's referring to is that you not maybe go level an entire forest.
Well, I have to agree. I have to agree with that.
Yeah, look for land that's been harvested already.
Yeah.
Which is I think what one of these was.
You want to say anything about mature trees? Or any trees?
I think I just leave it. You want to change it?
Not if it's not important.
I I think it's just. Trying to encourage people to use common sense removal of trees is discouraged. Don't level an entire field. There's some trees in the middle that you need to take down, then certainly you can take them down.
Okay.
We previously said on on on. On um, on, sorry. Uh, herbicides that it would be um, follow the same regulations that the town allows. And here it's saying that you can't use herbicides. I would suggest removing the that part.
Um, okay, so let me. We'll we'll fix the um, the problems and conflict. What are you saying though that we do want to include? Do you want to say that we? Shall not permit herbicides?
Right, I that's what I would say because all this is if they're on a side of a hill that's getting the sun. The runoff into whatever stream and wells, I think it's a bad idea.
Is that what you're saying, Jeff?
No, I'm saying that it previous uh, prior to this.
There's a conflict.
I'm looking, I'm trying to find it. I'm sorry, I can't find it, but somewhere else it says subject to the the town's regulations on herbicides. And here we're saying you can't use them at all. So which is it?
Right, so we should make it consistent. I I would say that it, okay, my goal would be not to use herbicides.
I agree.
Others.
Then get rid of the previous one.
I agree to that.
So yes, agree.
Put a comment here.
Remove prior reference to herbicides. Yeah.
I mean, if if we in fact have. Um, a town ordinance on the use of herbicides.
No.
It it would be, I think it would be good to have such a thing. My personal preference would be to ban the damn things completely. But if we were to have that conversation. Then every other ordinance simply would reference the town's ordinance for it. We would put it all in one place.
And is this is this retroactive?
No, you nothing that's illegal. You can't make retroactive uh. Uh, decisions you have to carve out existing farms or something. You have to carve out. Uh, you have to grandfather things. Yeah. It it you you can't make a a a retroactive law. This is it's not done in this country.
Unless you're building a hotel.
Yeah, exactly.
Unless you're building a hotel. I forgot about that part, yes.
Okay, you got that one captured. Move on. Um, screening. And A, you would add owners of a budding property must be notified of the owner's intent ahead. Of the plant, a board meeting where the site plan. Okay, so we do that Orion in the land use ordinance that we had a higher level.
With.
E- every time.
That's correct.
And this this would not be excluded from our current statement. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Well, okay, so this is a slightly different application associated with this.
It it is, but there's.
To restate it.
There's still, um, I mean, you can reference it from. The other land use ordinance, but um, there's still some items in the other land use ordinance that still play into. Into this because this is this is just your your requirements for the solar farm and then there's also the site plan itself.
Okay, so the site plan would be over this, above this.
Yes. And this is this is your solar farm ordinance and there's some items into it, but there's also your. Your you you'd have to go through your land use ordinance and find if there's anything in there that is applicable to it.
Okay. Okay, so that would cover it. Uh, that's the other question that we didn't get to yet. We'll do that at the end, whether this stays separate or whether it goes in the land use ordinance. We'll talk about that at the end.
I think.
Okay, so.
We'll talk about the end.
Okay, so we agree with this statement and it is covered in the land use ordinance. Um, is there a second part to this? Agree with deletion of section, agree to D. But would change E from stabilize and revegetation to parallel construction.
Parallel construction meaning stabilization and vegetation or stabilize and revegetate. By parallel construction, I'm talking grammar. I'm not talking building anything.
Oh, oh, oh.
It's just, it's a word, it's a word issue. This was beaten into me as a child by, by what my, one of my favorite all-time teachers. So, um, I just, it's the kind of thing that I see all the time. I would say stabilize and revegetate.
Okay, I'm okay with that. Any objections? Incorporate? Okay, John's comment. So this could mean just one sign for the entire installation. If so, to at least be affixed where most visible. In the event of an emergency, agree.
Yeah. How about a fixed at every gate? Or at every entrance?
Yeah. Okay.
No worries.
Our keyboards just won't.
That's what I would do.
We'll change it, we'll change it at the gate. All right, so it's the planning board review to approve the plan for removal at the time of application. Should we change the second reference of plans for removal to timeline for removal? Um, so let me just say this section is what exists today. Not that we can't make comments on it, but this is the existing ordinance when we get down in this section.
Uh, just as an opinion, I think remove physically sounds awkward. Why don't we just say physically remove? That, that occurs in a couple of places. The second line under section eight, near the end of the, it says, or the third line. Second.
Under section A.
Of A, you said?
Yeah, it's just a grammatical fix.
Yeah.
Okay.
So my, my issue here was we use the word plan a couple of different ways here and I, I just wanted to make it more. Yeah, I mean, are, when they make an application, we're asking them for a, a, um, a plan to remove everything when they, you know, to, when they abandon the site. Is that correct?
I think so.
Okay, so then the plan we're really looking for at this stage is they've, they already have a plan on how they're going to dismantle everything. This plan is more about, you know, are they going to do it in the next sixty days, hundred and twenty days? You know, that's where I was going with it. There's plan and plan. I, I wasn't quite clear which plan we're asking for. That's making sense. Because it says plans for removal. Is it?
Do we actually want to see both the plans and the timeline?
Well, we already have the plan because we asked for it when the whole thing.
Then this, then this one should be timeline. If we already have the plan, this should be timeline.
Yeah, unless we're asking for some kind of an altered plan for removal at this stage, but isn't that what we would have wanted up in the front of this whole thing, the application stage?
Thought so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Maybe we don't even need that second plans for removal because we've already got it in the, you know, they've got to remove it within a hundred and eighty days, right?
I think timeline is a good idea though.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, well, it, it seems like we got a timeline up there on top already, but maybe not.
Yeah, so it sounds like we ought to take a little bit of time and read through this couple of paragraphs here. And with the comments we've got here, just make sure it's consistent. Does this three?
What does that mean anyway?
Well, if you, if you look.
That three?
Yeah, that number three, what's it doing there?
I don't know. Um, I, I copied this from a PDF document.
That's all I'm asking is, is if that's, if it doesn't refer to anything, just take it out. That's all.
We, yeah, we had to go back and look at the original document just to make sure something in the cut and paste and enter there. Just look at original document there. On that one. Okay, so we, um, we'll go ahead and incorporate these comments in there. Take a read through it. I think it'd be worthwhile maybe to just post it back on the SharePoint when that's done. And then also forward it to O R C for review.
Mm-hmm.
And let them get a chance to get their eyes on it and see if they have any additions or concerns. And then we would get this back around in when, March? Orion?
Maybe. Um. And then.
Or April.
There's, there's a very good chance that they could get it back to you in March to get incorporated. We'll, we'll see. Um, there might be, I'll have to look at the cutoff date, but I do believe that our March meeting is the cutoff date or right thereof, um, for making the June ballot for the ordinance.
Yeah, it would be.
Right.
Yeah.
That's correct.
So we may get a chance to review this if O R C has a chance to review it, no major comments. Review it one last time in March at our meeting. Okay, so now, uh, the, what we reserve for the end here, where does this belong? Should it be in a separate ordinance? Or should it be part of the land use ordinance? I know Orion, I think you suggested that it ought to be incorporated into the land use ordinance.
I do, I do believe that, yes.
I, I would agree.
Sounds fine with me. Yeah.
Yeah, I would agree. And we have, uh, wind farms in the ordinance, right?
Yeah, yes.
Right. Right. So I think that's where it would belong. Okay. Done with that one?
Yep.
Um, parking ordinance. So I didn't do anything further with parking ordinance. We talked about it last time. We came to the conclusions of one-way streets are not one-way streets. Uh, based on the street width, how we would allow parking on the street. We talked about no occupied vehicles overnight in Rockport. And I think that was the summary of our changes. Now on parking ordinance, we're not the only um, committee that is, uh, introducing changes here. I know the police chief, fire chief are looking at this. Um, others, Orion, what else do we need to give you to get our inputs in?
That's it. I mean, I have what, what you all.
You got it.
I've talked about it. So, um, I just, I'm trying to pan down a meeting with the police chief to finish up what he's suggesting and then I can keep that ball moving. So that one will be uh, at your next month's meeting for consideration.
Okay, the final parking ordinance.
Yes.
Good. Okay.
Good.
All right, that's all I have for this evening. Does anyone have any other comments on these items or anything else?
Nice timing.
John?
Yeah, I just have one other thing. Um, and, uh, I'm really grateful, first of all, for, um, some of the new members of the board. So please take this in with that in mind. But, um, I just noticed actually, um, right in the early stages of the meeting, when we're looking at the pre-application, Jan, you sent in a letter commenting on that and, um.
I think we got, I, I think it was not a good idea to send that in.
Yeah, I, I.
No, take it down, please.
Well, we can't. Once it's in, it's there. Um, that, that's the, that's the problem. And so I just want to remind everybody, like, that, that's, I think, whatever you said, Jen. I got the only, I could only read the first page for some reason.
Oh.
Um, because the, I guess the way it was loaded or maybe it's my computer or something, but, um, you know, you're expressing an, an opinion and, you know, given some of the legal issues we've had, I just want to caution everybody, be really careful about that.
No, I understand. John, the way that I, the way that I think is by writing. And when I got it all written, posting it seemed like the logical thing to do. Then after I posted it, I thought, well, that was probably pretty silly. Because it's just going to come up in the meeting or it's not going to come up in the meeting. So I apologize for that. That will not happen again. That's.
And just, again, just so you know, that, that would become fodder for
I hear you.
A media story or anything, so. And we do know that when we correspond by email and that sort of thing, we've got, we know the protocols on that, right?
Yeah, there, there's no discussion outside of public, um, meetings. And I think the board's been very good about that. I'm very pleased about that. Um, so if there is a comment posted like in the minutes or something, there is no discussion. We'll discuss those comments at our next meeting.
Okay.
And I think everybody's been great about that.
Understood.
But I'm very, Jan, and no way am I being critical. I just, um.
Oh, no, 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 well deserved. No, 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 don't, don't apologize, John. You're right. My, my mistake.
Okay, any other board business this evening? Okay, seeing none, would anyone propose that we adjourn?
So moved.
Moved by John, seconded by Jan. All in favor? Two, three, four, five.
Yep.
Okay, five, zero, zero. And so the meeting is adjourned at seven thirty-one. Thank you very much, everyone. Have a good evening.
Thank you.